This is the founding of
Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Helena, City Commission Administrative Meeting, January eighteen, twenty twenty-three, four P M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take your role, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shirliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Comments or questions from the commission? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burton, I was asked a couple of times and I was unable to recall exactly what our timeline is for ARPA discussions going forward. And I know there's been, I'm not sure how solid it is, but if we could have a brief update on the next time ARPA discussions will appear on the agenda.
Yes, Mayor Commissioner, I believe at the next administrative week or meeting, a week from next Wednesday, right? We will be able to report back, we will have received from the organizations that you wanted full applications, they will have been reviewed and will report out to the commission at that point. And then we will you know, await further direction through discussions at that point and continue down the process until you're comfortable.
Okay, so we'll have an update on the first of February, the admin meeting regarding applications and next steps.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? I can't see those guys, so I don't know if they're nodding to me or whatever, but I'm referring to.
None, none from me, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
And Commissioner Shirliff?
Nothing from me, I appreciate Commissioner Reed's question and I look forward to continuing the ARPA discussion, thank you.
Thank you. Board appointments. Board appointments review, railroad TIF Advisory Board, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board, ITNS Service Board. I am recommending the following board appointments. Railroad TIF Advisor Bowl, appointment of Abigail Roach to a first term on her railroad TIF Advisor Bowl as a Helena College, University of Montana representative, this is an on-expired term. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisor Board, reappointment of Stephanie Boe to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisor Board as a banking finance representative. Term will expire January first, twenty twenty-six. Reappointment of Chris Hunter to a third, to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisor Board as a citizen at large representative. Term will expire January third, first, twenty twenty-six. Information Technology and Services Board, appointment of Garry Myers to a first term on the Information Technology and Systems Board as an I T executive, citizen at large, term will expire January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Comments or questions from the commission? Okay, recommendations from Helena Citizens Council Representative Swartkard.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Great, Brian Schwakert here from the Fifth District, Helena Citizens Council. Just quick updates, we are going through our budget recommendation process that started with an H C C. We're also actively filling out any open advisory board positions that are currently unfilled. At the beginning of the year, the Helena Citizens Council also goes through our election process for a new executive board, so that'll be happening at our next board meeting, which is next week, Wednesday. Some of the folks from the existing executive board wanted me to pass on our reaffirmation of interest and a commitment to supporting the commission through the hiring process of a new city manager. In previous hiring processes, H C C did have a representative or two involved in that process. And if the commission would be so kind to inform us of any interviews, maybe dates and times, and how we can best be involved. And that can go through Peggy, whose last name is now blanking on me, but I believe she has a.
Talking about.
I figured you did, Mr. Mayor. Other than that, there's a variety of other small and big projects that we are actively working on. Several Citizens Council members did receive some communication from citizens regarding, I believe, the expansion of a couple of city roads. And that was just one area of concern that a few citizens had, I don't know exactly what district that was in, but it sounds like there might be a little bit of change due to some of the freeze thaw issue in that district with the city road width. And that was all that the H C C had to report at this time, is there any questions or feedback that I can take from city manager, mayor, any of the commissioners?
Yeah, I just think when you get the actual address of those roads you're referring to, would you pass them along to the city manager, please?
I'll follow up with the district rep that emailed me about that and I'll pass it on to the city manager.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question, have you all, I guess whoever some, I know sometimes it's Ms. Perry and other times it's other representatives, but when the H C C representative is at our regular commission meetings, do they ever report back on the city manager recruitment process updates? Commissioner Logan has provided a handful of updates as a member of the subcommittee with the mayor, and I just want to make sure those are getting back to you all because we have discussed kind of where timelines are headed in the regular city commission meetings.
Sorry there, Commissioner Dean, you broke up a little bit on my end halfway through, it sounds like you were asking if we have had any feedback from Commissioner Logan regarding some of the applicants for city manager, is that correct?
No, no, my question was, was whether you had received from the H C C reps who are attending our regular city commission meetings, the updates that Commissioner Logan has provided on the city manager recruitment. We've had a number of regular city commission meetings where Commissioner Logan has provided an update on behalf of the subcommittee, which also includes the mayor on the process and timelines and when there will be opportunity for additional input from the, the community and other interested parties, and I just want to make sure that that information is being reported back to the H C C from our regular commission meetings.
Good question, I'll follow up with Peggy on that, I was not at the last December meeting, but I do know that we have reps that attend both the admin and Monday City Commission meeting, so I'll double check that that information is being communicated back to the greater group.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
City Managers Report. Web Governance Policy.
Thanks, Mayor Commissioners, I'd like to turn it over to Jake to give us an update on the.
Update to the web policies as the city website's being updated and we need to adopt policies as well and Mayor after Jake's done.
You bet. You have the floor, Jake.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. Wanted to give you a quick update on our website project first, and then as interim city manager Burton, I've explained, we have been working in conjunction with the new website, a governance policy, which is not something that the cities previously had adopted or had in place. And so we felt like the timing of the new website, it made a lot of sense to work towards establishing a policy for how we maintain and manage and take care of our website in the future. So if you recall our original project timeline, we were hoping to work towards a launch date of our new city websites into January. We learned this morning the development is still being complete, and so our vendor has advised that we, once our the design and development is finished, that we have about a three-week transition period before we actually launch and go live to the public. So we're tentatively looking closer to the middle of February, possibly late February. The good news is all of our information has been moved. We've started training with staff, we're going to be doing more training in the next couple of weeks. So I would say from our team's perspective, we're right on track. There's just been a slight delay in the actual development side of things, so still excited about the launch of that and it will be coming soon. As far as our web governance policy goes, for the past couple of months, I have been working with several different departments, the Clerk's Office, I T N S, and then we've given our directors an opportunity to look through the policy document and give feedback if they have any. Really, the intent of developing a website governance policy is to establish some standards and expectations for how we manage our website going forward, to provide the best customer experience that we possibly can. And so without going through it in too much detail, the new policy does establish really oversight and authority for the website, which is something that historically I think was divided between several departments. And as we have, you know, transitioned and as our I T N S department has really lost the internal capacity to manage the website, that is one of the things that, you know, we'll see an established transition, maybe from how it's been historically managed. Additionally, there are pretty specific expectations for different departments and staff members that are going to be interacting with the website and how regularly we review content, what the processes are for making updates, new pages, et cetera. And then some, some additional guidance on best practices related to accessibility, sharing documents, images, things like that. So we are still finalizing a few details in this document and also recognize that this is going to require regular review and revisions and, you know, because it is both a policy document and a working document for our staff that are going to be actively engaging in managing the website. We know that there will be changes as we go, but our hopes is that we have a a solid foundation and structure that allow us to, to manage our new website effectively and well. So with that, if there are any questions about either the, the website project or the web governance policy, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, comments or questions from?
I have just one question, I said two questions. The, first one, I'm just curious, so first this is excellent document and I'm really thrilled and I just puts us on such a good track because I know we've run into issues in the past because we didn't have this type of document and really excited that it's very easy to understand and read and I don't think there should be an excuse as to why anyone doesn't understand what the policy is. But one of the things I was curious about is when it comes to site administrators, how many we actually have. I know for a lot of organizations that having too many cooks in the kitchen can be an issue, especially managing that much content, and so I'm just curious how they're going to win that moving forward.
Yeah, Commissioner Dean, that's a great question. For our new system, what we define as site administrators, which is really anybody that has access to, you know, manage all aspects of the website. There's only a few individuals, myself, Stephanie Ryder in the city manager's office, and then a representative from the I T N S department. And their role is really to serve as a technical backup. And so Stephanie and myself will serve as really the primary administrators. Because our new system does have moderation capabilities, meaning, you know, we can set up workflows so that departments can edit content, but it has to go through an approval process through Stephanie and myself. It won't be the case for all content, for example, updated meeting information or board information, a lot of times those things need to be done with deadlines, you know, and legal timelines attached to them. And so there may be some exceptions, you know, some of which we've identified in the governance policy, but generally because we're able to create some workflows and approval processes for, you know, every day page updates. It allows us to give access to a little bit broader audience while still managing content and, you know, the final products. And so I would say that team, we're going to be looking at probably fifteen, twenty staff members throughout different departments and divisions that can go in and make, you know, some type of change to their areas.
I'm excited about that, the other one, and I don't I don't feel like this needs to be in a commission meeting necessarily, but I'd be really interested in just some of the Google analytics data in terms of what people are actually looking at and if we see any changes and if there's, I mean, if there's any way that anyone on the commission can be helpful and pushing out relevant information to, I think everybody would be happy to do that. I don't think that needs to answer the commission meeting, but just something I'm curious about. And I would just say really quickly that I this may not look like a super exciting document for someone just, you know, cruising our agenda, but a pretty good reflection of some significant strides that the city has taken over the last two years in terms of one, modernizing, and then two, really meeting our constituents in a manner that works for them. And Jake, you should be commended for all the work you've done because I think that there's a lot that happens behind the scenes that people don't realize and I'm super excited about where we're headed. I think it just dovetails well with all the work that's happening in the Clerk's Office. I would also note that's where Stephanie started out and convenient that.
After Trinity.
Yes, yes. Spreading, spreading the knowledge across city departments, but I'm really excited about this and I think that it's, I mean, it is one of the primary ways that the community engages with us and accesses the information they need to go about their daily lives in, in working with the city, so I'm very excited to have a policy on paper now. And also just the impact this is going to have to our communication strategy moving forward, so I'm really grateful.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Jacob, thank you very much for the work you're doing on the website, it's been, it's been nice to be able to see the progress with the website, and I agree with Commissioner Dean. Our website is a great way for us to interact with the public and our citizens and it's, our website is our storefront. And it's making information and policy more readily available and also to making us more available for comments and concerns, but my question for Mr. Garson is, is in terms of testing, how, how are you going about testing the website outside of yourself and Ms. Reinhardt? Is there a focus group or is there a way that the commission could take a spin through it or do you have a a group of citizens that are helping you with that? Thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner Shirliff, that's a great question, we've actually been discussing that with the vendor that is developing and managing our new website. And I would say that we're still in the process of identifying our user testing for external audience and, you know, one of the questions that our vendor has has posed to us is just, you know, what's the, what's the primary intent with our user testing? What are we hoping to achieve from it? And so I think that's the question that we're still trying to answer as we get the keys to the new website. We're going to be going through in the next two to three weeks, really our internal revision process where staff will be getting into the system for the first time, going through their pages and, you know, identifying is there anything that needs to be refined from what our consultants, you know, physically moved over? We do have the ability, thankfully with our new system, to share unpublished pages, you know, or, or test views, so we will be able to share links to the website with the commission to be able to go through and see before we go live to the public and explore it and identify, you know, areas that maybe we want to continue to refine, whether it's, you know, an immediate or long-term need. And then we will be looking at kind of finalizing a, a true user testing process as we finish, but that may be something that comes kind of in conjunction with our launch as we identify. I think because there are elements like navigation that are going to be pretty drastically different from what people have experienced. It's going to be a matter of balancing, you know, what feedback we get on some of those things that are simply related to it being a different experience than people have had in the past, while also identifying maybe gaps in information or, you know, areas that are still a little bit disconnected and need to be improved, so the short answer to your question, Commissioner, is that we don't have that fully finalized yet, but we are working on those details and the commission can, you know, plan on having access to, to be able to explore the website before, before we go live.
Do you have any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, I'd just like to say thanks to Jake for tackling this policy and, and as a former department head who had roles and responsibilities with respect to all things network, I guess, that weren't always clearly defined, I think this is going to be very, very helpful. And I appreciate your and others' work on this, so thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised nor do I have any written public comment online.
Thank you, we'll move along, presentation, City County Board of Public Health update.
Mayor, I am.
Oh, yes, you did say you had another, come on, come here, Madam Clerk, you knew he had another one.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, you're right, that was my fault.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Director Smith to give the commission an update on during the cold, cold spell in the warming house, the ice skating rink was closed. We had to do some homework to figure out what was going on, and I think Director Smith was able to give you a report today.
You have to.
One quick second, sorry if I'm late, Mr. Mayor, with that in response to what I sent you, the, the email?
The follow-up?
Yes.
Yes.
I should have been more clear, I'm super excited about this update also. So when Mr. Smith has finished, I will ask the question that I thought I had asked about a different warming situation, but this will be great. I was like, huh, that's, that's different than what I had asked, great, I look forward to it.
You have the floor, Director Smith.
Right, Mayor Commissioners, thanks for having me today. Quick update as it relates to the status of the warming house at the Memorial Park, not just skating rink or park itself, but the warming house. We did do some homework, we did our research and and spent a couple of weeks observing the operations. And the history of the building is the last renovation was in nineteen seventy-five.
Ouch.
Which is forty-eight years ago. The warming house has been closed to the public for the last three skating seasons due to failing infrastructure, mainly the restroom, plumbing, non-ABA accessible. So the building's tired and but I think it's a huge opportunity for future community benefit. It's small, capacity is about forty people, there were three hundred and ninety-five skaters Saturday night with limited amenities, concessions, skate rail, but no warming hot, porta potties outside. So we've had four thousand skaters in the last few weeks at the rink. So I feel it's an incredible opportunity to look at this facility, not just as a skating rink, but what other opportunities, multi, multi-use or potential opportunities in the future may be there. And I feel it's a diamond in the rough, being new to the community and seeing how vibrant that place is, and then case kids operate out of that in the summer. It's just pretty impressive. And that's the end of my report, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Smith, that is awesome to hear. Because from a, from an independent voice, and I'm happy that you were able to observe and report back to us because it's important to hear that kind of information. I look forward to working with the other commissioners and see next steps. Comments or questions from the commission? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that was an unexpected but super helpful update, and I'm wondering what the process would look like for getting an estimate on you know, ADA compliant restrooms, et cetera. If, if we might ask. See, I know we're about to begin the budget cycle, so I defer to you, Mr. Burton, on whatever best process is, but I would love to see more about what it would look like or what it could look like.
Mayor, Commissioner, we will do some due diligence relative to the question you asked, and I think it'll take some time, and I know that we may have, or you may have to make some decisions as we move down that road. But as you know, Director Smith has built and operated several ice skating rinks, and I think he has experience and knowledge, skills and abilities to maybe speed that process up. But even even in that regard, I know that there's been discussions within your ARPA discussions as to whether we allocate, or you allocated money toward that facility. And perhaps we can try to get some preliminary analysis to you and maybe look at a bigger project, but as we walk down that road, we'll take your direction and try to respond accordingly.
Thank you, so I apologize that I was not more clear, the original question I had asked, which generated this update, when we had some discussions back in December during the cold snap about a community level warming shelter for extreme situations like we had, and, and when that occurred in December, we don't have anywhere for people to go. It sort of fell to nonprofits and there were limited hours, so that the original question I had asked was, do we have an update on what's happening at the community, county, et cetera level to address, I mean, we're only in early or mid-January. Where are we in discussions? Should we have another cold snap like that? Because I would feel it would be unfortunate to find ourselves in the same position we were in December again, still not having a fallback solution in case of extreme cold.
Mayor, Commissioner, I think that within the confines of the Emergency Operations Plan, which is both the city and county plan, working through disaster and emergency services, there is a process that could deal with crises of that matter. Not that we have a standing facility available throughout the entire winter, but when when an event occurs, those folks through the Emergency Operations Plan, the police being on the ground, go through that process to say, okay, we need to stand some whatever the situation would be. And so what I would say is that that is the process we relied on then and moving forward, but also and we've had discussions and I think next Tuesday at the leadership team meeting, we're going to have the D E S coordinator in because it's been five years plus since we've updated that plan. And so I think we can zero in on with all the entities as we update that plan in the next year. A response that is updated and perhaps communicated so everybody's comfortable with it and know how to access it. I, I feel comfortable that our various agencies do now. But it's a real concern when we have that type of weather. And so I think we'll. And so I think we'll. Work through the op plan if another event occurs like we did the last one. But known for well that we'll be updating the emergency operations plan also moving forward for the next year.
Thank you. Any other comments from those guys online?
No other commissioners have their hands ready.
And.
I was just gonna say something about the next one.
No, I demand you go first.
Okay, I'll just briefly say I did get a report just the other day that. The hockey league's numbers are through the roof, so much so that. Core curling has had to has lost their ice spot at ten thirty PM at night. At the indoor rink and. So the demand is there. And I think that. Memorial Park is just. In my opinion, like one of the. Gems of the community and right now it's a little tired. And I think a little bit because we transitioned some of our focus to other. Adilities, including building at Centennial Park, which is a really. You know, it, I just, it's one of my, I live. Across from Carol and I take my walk across campus and then under, under through Centennial, under the bridge and into Memorial Park and it is. Just a really lovely amenity in our community. And something that I think really improves our quality of life, but we've been talking about it last year. The need to update the Veterans Memorial, which is. Really falling into disrepair in Memorial Park as well. So I think it's just an opportunity. Particularly that it also falls within the Tiff District and is directly adjacent to the other Tiff District. With the. New facility that the community has, this commission has voted to support that hotel going in that. We are, our timing is right on to start making some improvements. To an area that provides. A really healthy outlet in the wintertime when there's not many other activities for folks to be engaging in. And so. I'm very excited for us to keep moving forward with this and. The demand is already there, so we should be meeting it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just when I heard you say four thousand plus in the last couple of weeks. That is something. So, Mr. Manager, I hope we can get our. County people on board when we're doing this. Let's not leave them out because I know. That also. Is inclusive of some of the county folks, so please work along with the county to see how best they can assist in this process.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll, we'll better try to define this. So you have something to talk about at the next administrative meeting. And just an FYI at the next administrative meeting. We'll bring that forward under. The agenda. We'll also break forward the midyear budget review. We've also been revising and improving the whole CCIP process, including. The ability for the commission to understand the needs, but also look at. If you change rates by one percent, what can we accomplish? Two percent, what can we accomplish across the board? So we'll bring that forward for your. Understanding because that'll be. The way that we approach the whole budget process next year relative to that aspect. And then, of course, the ARPA applications as well.
Alrighty. We're now going to presentations, City County Board of Health. Update. We'll hear from the health officer, Ms. Neiman. You have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the invitation. It was Tim Burton and I who sat and thought it was really important now that I have something to to report other than a COVID update. I'm guessing that everybody kind of got tired of the repeating record over and over that you've heard me say for almost two, almost three years. So I do have other updates that I would like to share. And we put on the schedule to have me come every other month and give you an update since the. You know, the health department is a city county health department. And now that we're getting back to normal operations after the emergency response. I would love to be able to share. Information on a more regular basis. So three items that I'd like to share with you today. A behavioral health update, a local governing body update, and then our community health improvement plan. And so the first item are behavioral health update. Lewis and Clark Public Health has. Been asked by the, by the county to kind of take the lead on behavioral health work that's happening in the community. Around systems improvement in particular, so not necessarily providing the services in our community, but definitely. Assessing and understanding what what is available and where the gaps are. And working in collaboration with our community providers to make sure that people who are in need of behavioral health. Services are getting what they need in this community. So we have created a behavioral health systems improvement leadership team that includes members from the county. Sheriff's Office, the. Shawday Hospital, St. Peters Hospital, Pearview Health Center, and recently added membership. From the city of Helena. So Chief Petty will be the city's representative to that leadership team. As well as Todd Wilson from Helena Indian Alliance, the Apocha Clinic, as they are one of. Several providers in the community doing integrated behavioral health. And then also. Just lost the third. New representative. Just flew right out of my head. I'll come back to it. But important for you all to know that Chief Petty will start attending and participating actively. In that behavioral health systems improvement work, which is very exciting. And with that, the leadership team will also be tackling not only behavioral. Well, behavioral health in a broad sense, so not just mental health in our community, but also substance use. So the other item to report and update for you on is the opioid settlement funds. The county is receiving a portion of settlement funds and so is the city. And so in conversation with. With Tim, we. Thought what better way to spend that money than to pull it together and see if we can have greater impact. On the opioid crisis at the local level. We will also be engaging in conversations with Broadwater and Jefferson Counties to see if they are also interested in pooling funds. And doing more of a regional approach to. Local interventions for opioid, for the opioid crisis. So that's, that's really exciting. Opportunity for partnership. Not only between city and county, but also regionally. So really excited about that moving forward. And the other item that the behavioral health leadership team has been working on since December of twenty nineteen. Is the closure of Journey Home Crisis Stabilization Facility. It was closed when Western Montana Mental Health left our community and we've not been able to reopen it. So it's been a significant gap. In service in our community. We now have. Center for Mental Health. Now, Many Rivers Whole Health interested in providing that service. And so we're in negotiation now. And getting that facility and those services reopened. Budget is the biggest limiting factor at this point. So there is some Medicaid reimbursement funds available. There is some very minimal grant funds available, but from the Many Rivers proposal, we're still at a shortfall. So trying to figure out how to fund that service adequately so that when it opens, it's sustainable. That we're able to keep it open as a service in this community. So that's the behavioral health update. I'll pause and see if we have any questions from commission. On that piece of.
I just really, do you know what? Beyond the. Finding dollars to address that shortfall, is there a timeline that you've been looking at to execute this?
Because the crisis stabilization facility has been closed since twenty eighteen. My timeline is ASAP. We, we have to get this. Facility back open again. It's a, if you ask, not only behavioral health providers, but also our law enforcement partners. It is a significant gap in services, so it needs to be opened as soon as possible. But that is, that's our biggest barrier right now, is adequate funding.
We will entertain questions that end of the presentation.
I will move on then to local governing body. And this was an added requirement in the last legislative session. We are required to, we being Lewis and Clark Public Health and the City County Board of Health is required to have a local governing body in place. For any time that we either update, review and update current regulations. Or have the need to adopt new regulations. So for example. Lewis and, the City County Board of Health has a couple of regulations on the books now, onsite wastewater regulations, rabies regulations. Those periodically need to be opened, reviewed, updated and so forth. And then, of course, what you all experienced during the course of the pandemic, we put. Emergency rules and regulations in place as well. And that was under the authority of the City County Board of Health. The new law requires anytime the Board of Health wants to adopt or. Update regulations, there has to be another layer of approval. And that layer of approval happens by this local governing body. We've worked over the last two years to get that local governing body in place, interlocal agreement in place. So. What we have is the interlocal agreement identifies two, from the city commission, two representatives from the county commission. And then the mayor of East Helena. So we have. Commissioner Rolf, who sits on the City County Board of Health and the new commissioner Candace Payne as the county representatives. City representatives, Mayor Collins as our current board representative, as well as Commissioner Shertland. And then Mayor Kelly Harris from East Helena make up the local governing body per that. Signed interlocal agreement. The next step was to put bylaws in place on how they would operationalize. And so those have been drafted and as of this morning, we have a meeting in place. So January twenty third, next week, one thirty, there will be a public meeting that new. Governing body will come together and adopt their bylaws and have a. Discussion about a chair to to preside over those meetings when they need to happen. So. Great, it's, we're making progress. That's the update I wanted to give commission on that item. And then the third item, do you want me to?
If you want, granted, you'll just have to tell me when you want to move it.
I just wanted to pull up a really cool new. Dashboard. So. You all are very familiar with our COVID dashboard and that was our ability to really share. There we go. And I'm guessing everybody's seeing that online as well. So our epidemiologist fell in love with all of these Arc GIS tools that we have. When she built the, she worked with Eric and the GIS folks to build the COVID nineteen dashboard. She decided after last year when our help together task force. Created the Community Health Improvement Plan. That she wanted to put this in a, in a. Portal that is easily used by the broader community. And so. Very excited to share this new panel with you. So last year, when we created the Community Health Improvement Plan, this was done in collaboration with many, many partners throughout the community. I think we had close to seventy partners that participated in that process. And there were three priority areas that rose to the top. There was chronic disease, housing and behavioral health. And so what this dashboard does is it puts. Puts that community health improvement plan in like an interactive format for a community to not only see what work is happening in those areas. But also it allows you to see what metrics we're using to measure progress. In those three areas as well. And it also links the community to. Who in the community is doing that work? So we have three coalitions essentially that have agreed to do. Work in those areas and the three are the Healthy Communities Coalition that's tackling all of the work in the chronic disease section. So as you scroll down through, you'll, you'll see chronic disease, the long term goal, and then. You just click on learn more and it takes you to each of the focus areas. And also. It takes you to. A tutorial so that you know how to navigate this beast. But also the metrics that are being used to measure. The, the progress in. Around the chronic disease goals and objectives that are in there. And similarly for behavioral health. So as you continue to scroll, you get behavioral health priority areas, what their goals and objectives are. And then also the, the metrics. Of how we're measuring progress for that. And then the housing priority. Oh, so behavioral health, the local advisory council on behavioral health. Which Commissioner Logan sits on that leadership or on the. LAC as, as the commission representative, city commission representative. And between that group. And the Behavioral Health Systems Improvement Leadership Team and Suicide Prevention Coalition, those three entities are, are doing this work. Collaboratively in the community. And then the housing piece is. United Way has taken the lead, but is working really hard to try to put. That a task force together that's community driven. So it's a, housing is so complex, you all know that. And it came up tonight with the need for emergency sheltering when. When the weather goes bad. So. United Way has agreed to kind of be the point person, the point agency, knowing that there's a lot of partners that need to come together. And, and figure out the work around housing. So again, goals and objectives and then. A variety of data points that were. That we're tracking. Frequently asked questions. Upcoming events. So this is how you get involved. Behavioral health located at the local advisory council, when they meet, how to get connected. Also Suicide Convention Coalition, Healthy Communities Coalition. And as the housing stuff comes together and there's more organization around when they meet, that will be added. Lots of resources linked for individuals looking for resources in these areas. And then community voices and feedback. Of course, we always ask for community feedback on the stuff that we do. So we can make, do a better job of. Meeting the, the community's needs. So. That's hot off the press in the last couple of weeks. So I wanted to share that with you as well. And I will stop sharing unless there's somebody online that would need, wants me to scroll back. Or if anybody in the room wants me to scroll to a specific spot, I'll just close that. So that's what I have for you.
Thank you so much for the update, Ms. Neiman. We sincerely appreciate it. We'll turn it over to the commissioners. Comments or questions?
Yes, please.
Super briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Neiman. I am. A data nerd and I love the dashboards and I really appreciate the outward facing aspect of public health. It seemed inaccessible. So I really appreciate the work that's gone into making that a user friendly format. So thank you. Back to everyone who helped to work on that.
I swear, I, I was. And I'm very excited for more people to turn to it. I'm guessing. Jake might be listening online, but I'm wondering if there's a link we can help promote that resource as well.
Mayor, I confess that one.
Okay. Anybody online there?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This, this comment and questions for Mr. and the Neiman. Thank you, Drenna, for being here today. Thanks for the, the walkthrough of the website. Again, I echo the commission sentiments. I'm excited to. To learn more about this. I think more information is a good thing. With regards to the opioid crisis that you'd mentioned, is there going to be any? Training with the schools or work with the schools in terms of marcan training? I know they're doing this in some areas around the country and I don't know if that's something that you're looking to do or. If it's just informational. And, and also to a quick follow up, how can we help?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Shurtland, that's an excellent question. There, there are efforts in this community happening already around Narcan education and administration. And what, how I foresee this happening is the Behavioral Health Systems Improvement Leadership Team in collaboration with the the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council will put together the plan of action based on evident, based on our assessment of the greatest needs in our community, because there's only so much money. So we have to understand what the greatest needs are and use evidence-based practices to then address those needs. So I foresee a process that our community will go through to determine how those funds will get spent so that we are making sure to meet the need and we are using those funds in the most effective way possible. But I would anticipate that, knowing that Narcan and their approach, those opioid overdose interventions are evidence-based, I, I foresee that those will continue and expand. And I agree with you that the schools are a really good place to do that. So I danced around your question just a little bit, only because it's not up to me alone that we will, we'll take a collaborative approach to making sure that the interventions chosen are right for our community and are evidence-based.
Thank you.
Commissioner Logan, you have the floor.
None for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Newman, thanks again. We appreciate your update. We'll now move on to Bravo City County Infrastructure Urban Renewal Mixed-Use District. Transportation System Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. That long title is short for the Helena Valley Zoning that they recently passed. It's just one of the districts within the zoning. They did, they also have a rural residential mixed-use district. They have a suburban residential. Really, the big one that affects the, the conversation with the manager, Director Leland and myself have been involved in is the urban residential mixed-use. They're modeling it after, in some respects, the city zoning. You know, they have residential R1, R2, and R4, and RRO, CLM. And so they're looking out to us to try to, to work with them on infrastructure and urban design standards, really. And then Ryan can get into the expansion of some of the services that they're looking at, but really, they're looking, the reg, the regulations do not limit, you know, parcel or principal use for property or density restrictions, but the next really big steps that they're looking for us to cooperate on is the subdivision regulations update, which they're working on, but the joint infrastructure study. And that's looking at not only transportation, but also public works, serving water and sewer out to this urban district map that I handed out. And that, everything within the red folded line is really what we're talking about at this point. There is some talk outside of that, but so we just wanted to make you aware of the conversations we're having. Ryan, talk a little about the, the utilities, if you would like. Transportation, just coordinating our transportation plan so that we have a connect, connected network and that we don't aren't building a collector here and a local road out in the county vice versa.
Thank you, Director Knopki. And I just want to express my thanks. I see that he's selling the route is back. Appreciate that. Thank you. Director Leland, you have anything you want to add? You have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners, I'd just add a little bit. The utilities are going to be the big policy questions that are out there. Because the collector's, you get built to a certain size, but who's going to maintain the utilities? And there's always the big question out there is why doesn't the city expand services without requiring annexation? And there's a lot of good reasons why we don't do that. And that is not something that I'm promoting, but that is something that I'm trying to squash. And then the other one is, how in the future are we going to take care of wastewater? It's going to be a big decision because right now we have gravity for water. It's just a matter of putting the bikes in the ground and having the appropriate storage. We are getting more and more quantity as far as being able to treat it. We just have to upsize the capacity in both the treatment plants. But now with wastewater, once you pass Custer, you have to pump it back up. Now the discussion comes, do you put big lift stations out there to use the capacity that we have? Do you move everything down with a new water treat, or a wastewater treatment plant, or do you have two plants? How that's going to look and how that's going to evolve is going to be why we are doing the infrastructure study, what is the most economical and what are the phases and trigger points of when we have to start to look out into the future and what would be needed to have maybe even plant or just pump it up. And then also stormwater is going to be a very, very big issue because right now the county does not have the same regulations that we do with the NRS more permits. So with being able to treat it, the detention, and also with the conveyance of it is going to be a major major portion of it because they use ditches in the, in the county right now with the roads. And we use curb gutters and then pipes. So that would be a major upgrade to some of these subdivisions that are out there, but we are working with the county. So in the future, if they have a subdivision, we can hopefully better incorporate it into the city when, when they come or require them to, to bring in and what that means.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, perhaps you said it and I missed it. What is the timeline on the study? Do we know?
Mayor Commissioner, there's really no real set timeframe. We are just working with the county of what the scope is going to look like and how are we going to do it? And then funding, how are we going to fund it? What level this study is going to be? So there's a lot more negotiation, but we are hoping, you know, year or two, we get this locked up.
Any other, yes, please.
I would just like to add that, so we're at the definition stage. And this, to be here, is probably a 25 or 30-year journey to get to county zoning and then to get to joint urban standards. I think that it's very good for the, for the city, the county, and, and the valley to have these studies being scoped out and talk about joint funding. And I think it's going to be more predictable for developers and the private sectors that want to expand. So thankful to the county for, for zoning, and I think this is a good strategic partnership between the city and the county.
Okay. Any other?
Oh, go ahead, please. Mayor, Commission, we started having these conversations before I was hired. And we have made a bigger step in the past two, three years than we have the whole previous time because it's such a big conversation to be out there. So to get to this study is a long, long time.
How long you've been here?
Twenty years.
Okay, yeah, right. Okay, thanks. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Ms. Ma, I just have two points. I'm really glad this is happening for a lot of reasons. I think one thing that, and Ryan, I think you highlighted it well, is that, you know, do we need a new wastewater treatment facility to do a bunch of giant lift stations? I think one thing that people forget is that so you are, you're annexed and you hook up and you think it's $40,000 for that hookup. That's, that's not for everything else. And I want to ensure that the citizens of Helena are not picking up the tab for folks wanting city services, which I think it's important. I think that they're going to have a lot to deal with north of Custer for a lot of reasons in the next, you know, 10, 15, well, even less than 10 years. But I just really hope we don't lose sight of the fact that it is more than just the cost of the hookup because there's so much other infrastructure that is impacted that we don't necessarily deal with right now. One question I did have for David was, how does this impact that LRTP update? Because I'm, I'm thinking about especially moving into this new phase of what, how we fund, not how, well, how we fund transportation, how we're thinking about all of it. And, and we have the customer discussion. There's really no way for folks to move east-west except for Sierra Road, you know, when you're north or southbound. And so how does the LRTP conversation work into this conversation, or does it?
Mayor Commissioner, so this LRTP has always been the greater Helena area. So we've always looked at basically how Birdseye up to basically Lincoln Road across, up to the lake, over to East Tona, and basically south to the county line. So the LRTP contemplates last update, we took a very dedicated look at the county versus the city. So there were specific county projects and specific city projects. As you alluded to, our, both our merging MPO status, which they'll be giving, I'll be giving you an update next administrative meeting on. Those funds do come into play. Depending on when those funds become available, might depend on how much we actually are able to spend because we actually need to update the LRTP. But any update, whether it's using the, the new funding mechanism or the city and the county and East Toner going in like we had before with MDT. They'll incorporate not only the new plan moving forward, all the requirements, but also any of these urban standards or any of this discussion moving forward. So it'll be integrated to the extent that we have a good plan moving forward. The county has it so that any development out in the county, they can refer them to the LRTP and, and vice versa.
Anybody online out there?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Well, Commissioners, any final comments? I just got one final comment. I've been hearing about Panera Bread and Chick-fil-A. Can y'all give us, tell us what the heck's going on with those people? Whether they're coming or not coming, or this is just a fib or what?
Is Director Brink online, Mayor?
I know I doubt it. Okay, we can get.
Not anymore.
We can get information later.
Mr. Mayor? I, I'm in Missoula, if you want me to bring you some.
Mayor, there is an update on that, but I'm not, I don't want to misspeak.
I can do, we can get it later.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm here.
All right. Do you have an update? Quick one?
Well, we do. As you know, originally Chick-fil-A was, was going to locate at the ShopCo Shopping Center. There were some issues with shared parking agreements. Don't know the whole backstory, but Chick-fil-A has pulled out of the ShopCo location. And I can't say specifically or, or with any definitive answer or information, but Chick-fil-A is not going away from the city. They are potentially locating on another site off of Washington Street, if that's correct, just south of Costco, Hobby Lobby, Home Depot.
Okay.
So they're not going away. Now, Panera Bread, I don't know anything about Panera Bread. We have not heard from them. No update, no update on that, that restaurant.
Thank you. That is very nice to hear. Any other comments from the Commission? Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have Ryan Schwacker has his hand raised.
Okay, you have the floor, Mr. Schwacker. Ryan, you have the floor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just following up of what the Parks Director had previously stated about the ice rink. I am a founding board member of the Last Chance Curling Club here in Helena, Montana. And we would definitely continue to fully support any efforts to improve both the warming hut, but I would say more specifically the way the ice is maintained. And if there's ever any interest from the City Commission or folks that are going to be delegating any potential funds for that project. We did have a couple of conversations with both the previous city managers, presented to them a couple of different proposals that we had, just done some cursory research on as far as a glycol system at the ice rink. And in addition, I would say the lighting, exterior lighting there is something that severely needs to be addressed. I live in that neighborhood as well. I'm often out and about after dark. And it's just, it's, it's very poorly lit. So if, if there's any way that we could build that into any potential budget for improvements at that facility, we are more than willing and able to, to help participate and engage in that in any way that we can.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public?
I have no other public comment online.
Kind of comments from the Commission? This meeting is adjourned.